It is 6:33 on Monday, August 15th. We're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. So if there is no objection, I know that I wasn't clear on the orders. So we can actually very quickly do the minutes and be done with our minutes before we move to the evaluation. So for July 18, 2006 minutes, did everybody get a chance to look at them? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any edits, comments, questions, changes? No? Okay. All in favor to approve the minutes from July 18th? Please say aye.
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 I'll stay because I wasn't here.
Okay. So we have one abstention. Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we're gonna move to what we called old business because we were planning on doing this a little earlier this summer, but we postponed it till now because of some other urgent matters. We're gonna continue with the rest of the agenda as listed here. So the visitors' comments section will remain. If any one of you had some comments related to some other topics, you wanted to speak, the only thing is we ask you to please sign in and put your name down if you would like to say anything. Other than that, it's business as usual. And I'm saying that because of this. The next thing that we're gonna do is something that we're gonna try, I believe, for the first time. It might have done in the past, but not since I joined the committee. It is self-evaluation of the school committee. And the purpose of it is multi-fold. One is have a good conversation amongst ourselves, first of all, to see, you know, what, how the year went, what we did well, what we did not do so well, what other opportunities exist for us, to change things, to improve things. But also, we hope that this is gonna be one of the first steps in our interaction with all of you. In fact, it doesn't just stay here. We're gonna do this more often than just once a year. But we wanna make sure that we going forward create this trusting, transparent relationship with our school committee, our parents, our school, our staff, our students, if they would like to join us, so that we get your feedback about what is going well and what we need to do differently to make sure that our school district is in better shape every passing day. So with that, we will not really do anything very formal. I will, unless there's an objection, I will facilitate the conversation. The one thing that I will do that I typically don't like to do as a facilitator, I will actually, at times, be part of the conversation as well. Hopefully, nobody minds that. But again, we're not really trying to have a very, very formal conversation. All we're trying to do is make sure that we engage all of us in this conversation as to our opportunities and good things that happened in our district. So with that, I will ask a few things of all of us. For, if you have any questions or if you have any comments, if you would like to contribute, if you, anyone can just let me know, raise a hand or any other sign, that would be great. So we can go in order. The other thing is, really, there is nothing that we're not prepared to hear. I don't know what that might be, but I just wanna put it out that way. With that, I know that it's not always the easiest thing to do or speak your mind the way you even planned to do. So for that reason, I brought some post-it notes. If you believe that you would like to say something, but you really don't want to say it in front of the camera or even us at this point in time, hopefully, we'll get there. Just, you know, I will, I can just put these or I can pass these around. Just feel free to jot down your thoughts, your ideas, then we're gonna collect them as well. And hopefully, as we look back, not only at the notes that we take, but also the feedback that you provide us, either verbally or on these post-it notes, we're gonna, we're gonna let you know what we heard and we're gonna let you know what we are gonna do related to the feedback that we received from all of you. And let me wrap that up by thanking all of you for being here this evening because I know it's August 15th and the last couple of weeks of summer and you're spending your time with us and we really, truly appreciate that. So is there any, any comments from the school committee? Any suggestions? Any other way that you would like to proceed? Is this for everyone?
Give it a try.
Okay, let's give it a try. So the very nice thing is that Cheryl has a lot of colorful markers. So we can't go wrong. Should we put the light on? Will we be able to see this? Is it too dark? It's good? Okay. All right. All right, so let's start with some, some good things. So typically, what I like to do, and I'm gonna add other pages to this as well, but I just, you know, I like to put a big delta and a plus and just, I do this. What we do is, these represent our gaps or opportunities that we did not really find time or to explore or opportunities that we did not explore in period, missed opportunities. The plus, obviously, is what, what happened and we think that they went well. Don't hold anything back. We have a lot of educators amongst ourselves, as I can see, that's especially important for us. So let's start the conversation. If you don't mind, I will start doing a quick round here. Just give a couple of thoughts. Let's start with that, then we'll open it to everyone. Again, this is, in this section, we're not gonna really hold ourselves to our visitors' comments section rules. Feel free to jump in, just raise your hand and we'll be right with you. Does anybody wanna start with some positive things?
I will. One thing that I've really been proud of is that even when we disagree, we really work it out and we all respect each other. I think that goes along-
This is when we, you say we, the school committee?
The school committee.
Okay.
So it goes a long way in having decisions get made.
Okay? All right, anybody else?
I think it's fair we put the staff and the kids very important in terms of what our job is. You know, that's what we're here for. We're here for the staff and the kids who are in our district.
So is it fair to say commitment to staff and the district? Would you like to say staff? Students in district?
Our students.
Okay.
Really, everybody who works in the district, which is, you know, which includes parents, of course.
Let's just put community. Okay?
I think our commitment to generating communication consistently to all those folks is something that we prioritize. And I think we've done a good job at keeping it in forefront.
Thank you. All right. So I just wanted to start with that because, you know, there is really nothing market science about this. It's just a simple conversation. So with that, I will turn it to everybody. Just if you have any comments, please, go ahead.
I thought the school committee did a really nice job town meeting night, presenting their case and the rationale for why they were asking for the additional funding.
Thank you. Okay? Anyone else? Again, just, you know, let me put these out there. If you feel that you would like to do this, there's really no shame in doing this.
Well, I would like to compliment the school committee because having attended a few meetings, I've watched you grow as a committee and I've seen your passion for the schools. I'm not sure it comes across all the time because the communication or the lack of attendance isn't always here. But I've seen you grow and I've seen the passion that you have. I have that passion for the school system, so it's nice to know that you have it also. And it's not just one individual, it's all of you.
Thank you, Rob. By the way, it doesn't have to be just related to the school committee. I know you have a lot of great things to say about us, but feel free to just, feel free to just jump on anything else that you had expected to happen during the last school year or even before then and we did not get to. We don't really want to limit our conversation to what the five of us have been or have not been doing. Just this is actually a conversation that we wanna have that will also in turn provide direction to us.
One thing that I find lacking, and I am informed because I've been here, is there are policies or things that are happening that aren't being conveyed to the staff who work for the school, whether it's the new policy over report cards or it's changes in prices of lunch or bus schedules or those kinds of things. I know they're discussed here and I'm here, so I hear them, but it's not getting out there to the community, whether or not they watch it on TV. I'm not sure they sit down and watch that.
Of course they do.
Well, I personally sit and watch way for it to come out.
So the policies are not clear and not communicated, communicated properly? Okay.
Is it policies aren't clear or policies aren't communicated or both?
I would say both.
Okay.
Like when you change something, and specifically, I'm thinking the whole thing with the report cards. I mean, I don't know if you're on Facebook, but that has caused quite an uproar in town. Oh, yes.
When is the change of the report card? I don't have a mind. My assignment goes to school here.
Not report cards, class assignments.
Which is on the report.
Class assignments on the report cards. I was miss-
There was also issues with like report cards, too.
Yes.
When something had gotten changed and it, teachers weren't sure if they were supposed to or weren't and no one could give us an answer, our administrative team, so it was just difficult. So it was kind of like a little bit of a hesitation in water. Thanks, but then we got the information.
Do you, and I know there are a few other things, but that's the one that comes to mind the most.
Yep.
And just because, I mean, I've had parents questioning me, well, when are we gonna find out? I was told two weeks before school.
I think it was, that's a great point. It allows us to document it because it was mentioned a meeting or two ago again that, you know, when we have policy changes, what is the vehicle for us to really clearly communicate it to everyone?
That's right.
So that's, that's a great point. Thank you.
I was just following up with Mrs. Moore. I was like, from a parent's standpoint, it trickles down to the parents as they're unsure and then we all become unsure. And then also, I do attend meetings and I go multitask and watch meetings. I don't need to attend while cooking dinner and do this thing. Just sometimes, from a parent's standpoint, it's hard to understand the explanation of things because, you know, we're not in the system. And sometimes, the terminology or how it's explained, you kind of, you take it differently than what actually could be possibly, you know, one way versus the other.
When you say explain, do you mean when you read it, it's not really easy to understand?
Sometimes.
Okay.
And then you have, I don't do social media, but you have the gossip and the, you know, it spreads like wildfire, did you know this? What's going on with this? And then you get, you just don't know what to go to. And even attending meetings, you're going, no, that's not right, but 50 people think it is. So it causes a lot of miscommunication. So if you get that, you know, helped, it's gonna help with the parents because we can question and then we'll get the right answer.
Yeah, thank you. Okay? All right. Feel free to use the post-it notes as we make this round. Actually, what I had in mind is just to keep this conversation to about an hour or so, but if it goes beyond that because the conversation is good, we can do that as well.
One of the things that came up last year a number of times was the lack of information the school committee had on certain subjects and I heard more than once, we didn't know, we didn't know, we didn't know. So I'm wondering how, how that's going to be addressed? Do you want to hear from, you know, the staff in the schools? Or are you expecting to hear things from the administration as to what's going on in our buildings? Because there were a couple of, I thought, pretty significant issues going on at West Street last year and I'm not sure it ever came to your attention or how it got to your attention, if in fact it did.
You know, that's something that we, we discuss a lot. Whether it's just, you know, one of us, two of us together or even in these meetings. I totally agree with that.
And I know part of the problem was maybe not all the administrators are forthcoming in those administration meetings, so, you know, there's a gap there as well. So if the administrator is not forthcoming, you know, what recourse is there?
And I also think it's a delicate balance between following a chain of command and-
Exactly.
You know, I do, I come from the business world as well and following a chain of command is vital to running an organization and I feel education is the same way. On the other hand, I agree that we don't know what we don't know.
Exactly.
And I'm a parent, too, and I have, you know, I have a child in, in high school and I hear things on the other end that are concerning to me and so-
And if our, the person that we're expecting to bring these issues to you is not, I'm not sure what to do about that.
Yeah. I think that, I think that is a very important conversation that we need to continue and something that we need to problem solve around. Because it is something that's been coming up for the last, since I've been on the school committee. And a lot of times, we hear it when it's at a crisis point.
Right.
And I don't, I don't like to solve problems that way.
Yeah, we'd rather be proactive ourselves instead of, you know, reacting to a situation. It's much easier to take care of it at the beginning and, you know.
So let's, let's have a little more conversation around that. I think that's an important thing. Let me start with a couple of, couple of quick notes on that. That's, I absolutely agree, that's a great, great point. And we, not sometimes, often probably come here and say, hey, you know, we didn't know about. And there are a few reasons for that. One is that many times, we actually find out about things during these open meetings because we are bound by open meeting, by open meeting laws and we do not really get to discuss any one of those things in private, by email, you know. When the superintendent sends us a message that says, hey, here's something that you should know about, there's always a note that says, please do not just, you know, respond to all. If you have anything to say, if you have any comments, only send it to me so we can add it to the agenda. So that is one, one quirk of, of our overall system and that doesn't allow us to have those conversations. The other thing is, by the time we get here, because we have a gap between our meetings, sometimes things boil up very, very quickly. By the time we get here, they're already at a point of crisis, as Deanne said. So we are dealing with crisis and we have to react to it as opposed to be able to proactively take some measures and see if we can prevent it from happening and we don't get that opportunity. But that's a great point. One last thing on that, I will just comment on something that you said. I, I understand that there is a hierarchy, but sometimes, I believe, hierarchy also causes some of the dorkiness. And that is a very delicate balance. You know, my business perspective is a little different, to the extent that we can inform and empower everyone to do what they can do in their own, in their own role. I think we allow those folks to actually take the necessary steps almost immediately and just prevent some of those things from happening. That also allows probably our administrators to, to have the need to be on top of everything at all times because by the time they're informed, some things are burning anyway, so we don't wanna do that. How we get to that point, I don't know. And that is probably where we need your help and that is why we need to have these conversations more often. It seems to me, I don't know if everyone will agree on the school committee, that we have a gap in our, in our communication, possibly because we have a gap in our trust, possibly because we have a gap in our transparency. And it goes both ways. It's not just, you know, one side or the other. It goes all ways. We don't just put everything on the table the way they should be put on the table at all times and that's keeping us from having visibility into issues that are important where you guys could quickly react to certain things. We could react to certain things and we don't have that ability. I think it just goes to some of those trust, transparency issues. Hopefully, you know, this type of conversation will eventually get us out of that vicious cycle.
Plus, some of those issues are the ones that maybe are not under our jurisdiction, per se. You know, we, we, you know, we always have questions, but we should ask through the superintendent. We have questions because it's really not for us to ask administrators because we don't, you know, we're not in charge of that quote.
Great point.
So it's a, it's a communication and sometimes it might be that we just, it's not in our purview to do with any of that. Except that, you know, we are concerned if it deals with the overall, if it causes issues or if it causes morale issues, those kind of things, you know. So that becomes the issue where it is, it's a fine line between that.
Yes, I agree.
I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing that sometimes, the difference is we're really here for governance and policy and budget. However, as Jim said, we all very much have a passion and care about all of, all of the community. So it's a fine line that we have to walk because, first of all, we don't wanna step on the superintendent's, you know, toes. We don't wanna step on a principal's toes. But we still wanna hear because, again, as Jim said, when it's a morale issue or when things are happening and somebody feels like they're not being heard or validated. Also, the other part of that is, sometimes people are just more comfortable speaking to one person than another. So I hope that if people are comfortable speaking to me or to Jim or to Emery or to Deanne or Jen, that you'll speak to us, but knowing that we then have to go to Cheryl so that we can try to help get things worked on. But it's really-
Yeah, those are, those are great points.
It's really that we're not in charge of administrative issues. So that's, that's sometimes the hard area there.
And that goes back to what I said earlier, that we all have to understand our roles and there are some things we can do, some things we can't. And since you started mentioning it, I will just, you know, point those things that typically school committees are charged with or is within their purview. School committees are responsible, accountable for the budget. We approve the budget. We don't necessarily put the budget together. Obviously, folks, you know, you all and our administrators know what's going on in the school system much better than we do. We ask the questions afterwards, but we don't put the budget together. We approve the budget after we have those conversations. So budget is one. Policy is another thing, school-related policies. In fact, if you visit some of the websites, you'll probably see that they're referred to as school committee policies. I don't know if we call them that way on our website, but you know, that's basically the reason. The third thing, in fact, probably this is the first thing, the first thing that I put on third, the, the direction of the school district. So I'm hoping everyone's familiar with the strategic plan that got approved in October. The strategy, where we want to go, what our vision is, what our mission is, all that, the approval of that and setting that vision and mission is the purview of the school committee as well. And finally, there are certain positions, the appointment of those positions or the selection of, of those positions are under the purview and there are only a few positions like that, under the purview of the school committee. Anything other than that, what Marie said is exactly what it is, that we really do not want to be in a position where we micromanage everything because we should not. But also, we trust all of you in the school district that those things are taken care of from an administrative perspective. Administration is not our, our job at all.
I am curious, though, get your thoughts on this and also what, what the protocol is in the event that a staff member isn't, isn't being heard or a problem isn't being rectified with their administrator. What protocol is in place for the next step?
So typically, what happens, I would hope, is that an administrator brings to me that there's an issue perhaps with a, with a staff member that they're not able to resolve and it comes to my level and we have the discussion about what the issue is. I've established already bi-weekly meetings with the union to try and address some of these issues at a very low level so that they may not rise to a grievance, although grievances certainly do occur. But I think that's a first step at working through what has historically been some issues that maybe have, people felt have not been addressed. Further than that, you know, I am responding to parental complaints and parents will hear me say, have you spoken to the building administrator first? And then if they have, then I, then I work with them to make sure that, that I, they've been heard and that I follow up with building administrators so that we can come to some solution and problem solve. And there are some times when we are unfortunately gonna have to agree to disagree. And those are difficult conversations sometimes to have, but hopefully, those can be done with respect and that, that we all have the children's best interest at heart. And so that's where, you know, we're coming from. The administrative retreat is happening on Tuesday and Wednesday, so tomorrow and, and Wednesday. And a lot of what you're talking about is what is on the agenda. So talking about our culture and climate, talking how we're supporting students, social, emotional needs of students, but also the stress levels of staff because it is high, not only because of DESI regulations and changes and ed eval, but also, and, and Granby in particular, because of the budget issue. And that's created a lot of stress. And being able to hear that as administrators and try and reduce some of that stress for, for staff is the goal really for this year.
Does that feel like it's helpful?
It does and I, I appreciate you asking Cheryl that question because you need to know what to do. And fortunately, we do have a new administrator in our building, so I'm hoping, you know, I'm, that that's not going to be an ongoing issue, that our new administrator, you know, will, will take our concerns where they need to go if he is not able to address them himself.
I actually have a T-shirt that I'm gonna make for Mr. Latoy. It's all of the characteristics of the principal that the school, that the search committee had put together. So they really, I think, voiced the concerns and the desires of the staff around openness and trust and transparency and all that. And I actually found a way to put it into a Superman. So I'm gonna build that, that T-shirt's coming to you. But, you know, we, we hear that, we, we know that that's an issue out there and one that we're working to address.
And maybe some boxes next week so we can check.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I have to say that I do appreciate showing the roles of school committee because just in the example of not knowing teacher assignments for the upcoming year from a parent's standpoint, people, you know, get nervous with change and it was a change. And when parents, we heard it as a group, as parents. And when we heard it, a lot of parents instantly have negative comments against school committee. And I'm sitting there going, I don't really think that that was anything to do with him, but I wish there was a way to educate parents on education and everyone's roles so that you knew, you know, how to really direct your questions to or, you know, if you're frustrated with something, you're not misplacing that blame on the wrong person. Because I think that happens quite frequently with school committee or administration or where their anger lies really isn't possibly where it should be going to.
My favorite one was when they, sorry, when there was the student walkout, there was a comment that said, "School committee told them to go back in."
You just, you know, it's just, I wish there was a way to educate it a little bit better. I don't know.
It's, it comes with that communication that, you know, we know that is a gap for us.
And during, during the whole budget process, I kept seeing on Facebook, the school committee wants to take away this. And I'm like, no, we actually don't. We really don't wanna take away those teachers. No, we really don't. And I, and I kept answering back on Facebook, this is not, this is, no one wants to do this. No one wants to, but give us some other solutions. What do you want, you know?
Right.
And I think that's part of the communication.
You know, and I think, I think that is one of our, our pluses for the school committee is I think we all work really hard at not taking things personally and we understand that it goes with the territory and, and so- And we understand that it goes with the territory, and, and so,
A lot of it's fear.
Yeah, I, we understand. I mean, I'm a parent too, and I understand that a lot of it is fear, and change is hard, and, so I don't think we really take it personally.
And to the comments about the social media, the superintendent's office does have a Twitter feed. I'm learning how to Twitter. And there will be a Facebook for the Granby Public Schools soon. And I'm just trying to iron out all of the, and David's helping me. But so that will be,
And I'm not on Facebook, or any, I'm not on any social media. So if anybody wants to contact me, it's gonna have to be old school emails, or,
Call her late, if she wants to.
Oh yeah, I love that.
So just going back, not to beat a dead horse, just procedurally, go back to the change of the report card goes home, there's no teacher listed on it. So was there a note in there that said, "There's no name here now, but you're gonna get your teacher assignment in August." And if that wasn't there, then I can understand that someone erred somewhere.
No, I mean, some parents found out at the kindergarten, you know, regist, or kindergarten, wait, this night, sorry. And some parents found out there. And then for my son's grade specifically, if I hadn't known about it from my daughter going into kindergarten, I really would've just said, "Blank report card, huh." And I wouldn't have known about it. But I had known about it through, you know, that night, but if I didn't, I probably could've,
So there wasn't, there wasn't a note in the report card that says,
No, there was not.
That, that would've taken care of it.
Word of mouth. Again, word of mouth ends up having that telephone game of not hearing correctly.
Right, my nine-year-old told me. He said, "I think, uh, it'll come later."
That's right. That's where you trust the kids, because if the kids don't know, then no one knows, right?
But, you know, the other day, I was at just the public library with my children, and I had parents that are, have children going into kindergarten, and they're going, "We haven't heard anything yet," and they're just frantic. And they're new parents coming in, you know, and I'm like, "It'll come. I've been through the system." But a new parent coming in who doesn't, you know, is not confident, is going, "I haven't heard anything yet. My child's asking. I don't know what to do," you know? And that's frustrating for them.
We dropped the ball on that as, as a district. There's just no other way around that.
Well, and I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the principals, but they're not here. And there was agreement as to how that was going to be communicated. And I believe it was going to be in a connect ed and an email, and whether or not that did or did not happen.
As an upcoming kindergarten parent.
Okay. We apologize, but certainly that was the intent. Bill is gonna be introduced as the new principal. I've been answering emails on a regular basis, saying, "We've hired a new principal. We've had, you know, the resignation. We appreciate your patience. And we've hired a new principal." That's first on the list of to-dos, is to get that notification out to parents. And the other is the list of school supplies. That's been out there too. So we're, we're trying to get that up on the website. So as soon as Bill gets all of the, all of the families informed of their next years, or this coming year's teachers, we'll get on the, we'll get on the school supply list as well.
Can they go all together?
Bye.
The shelves are emptying quickly.
Bill, you wanna, you wanna jump in, even though you haven't been introduced yet?
We're, we're trying to work on that. So I'm Bill Latoy, first of all. I'm thrilled to be here, not to, not to go in the wrong order of the agenda. This week, the letters are going home. It'll have the teachers on there, and the supply list, and of the teachers that wanted to include it with our letter, and then others are included in the mailroom. So our goal is that by Thursday, those will be in the mail. And we wanted to try to keep it the same between both schools. And there was a lot of work to be done behind the scenes to make sure that was done correctly, and that we're communicating correctly. So it's easy to say, "Yeah, we're just gonna do something." But when I put my name out there on something, I want to make sure it's gonna be right, and I want to make sure that it's been well thought out. So that was the delay, and this being my second week, getting that letter out.
So I will switch gear. I will turn this way. I have a few topics that I think we might want to talk about. So we talked about the communication amongst ourselves. I think we're, we're happy with that, the way things are evolving. And I think we heard some positive things that way as well. But there were three things that I have on my list: budget, policy, and strategy. How we're doing with that, especially our budget. What are your thoughts, school committee, about our budget, budgeting process, what we were able to do, and what we were not able to do?
That's, that's a big question.
Those are big buckets.
Just throw a few things. I mean, we can't have everything covered in one,
I guess, as, you know, I had spoken during the policy subcommittee meeting. One thing that I, maybe, and maybe it's just me, but I felt like we didn't have kind of a schedule to go by, and so I can't, to me, it was like everything just kept coming at me, and I, you know, was trying to keep up, because obviously, we all have jobs, right? So I think for me, like, knowing, having kind of, not deadlines, but, you know, a way to pace ourselves, so that we actually have things ready in time for the town, and we know where we're going. And we also don't lose sight of it, because in the minutia, we tend to get busy, and our agendas get really full, and then all of a sudden, we're trying to rush to do budget, so.
So the budget timeline wasn't?
It wasn't clear to me, and I didn't feel like it was kind of in front of us, like a set timeline.
I think we did a better job this past year than the first year. There are definitely improvements. For me, it's, you know, going into the third year, it's, it's just so hard to wrap my head around this whole budget process. And there's so many moving parts. You know, starting in February, I, I agree with Marie, that it just feels like there's so much information coming at us, and it's constantly changing, that it's hard to make sense of it. And if I can't make sense of it, then it's hard for me to communicate it to anybody, because, because I don't even understand it. And I know that we've, we've talked about this endlessly, because I don't know how to create a system to make it easier to digest.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah.
It's just a moving, such a moving target all the time.
I know, yeah.
You know, we just gotta try to simplify it as best we can, and we have to, we have to ask a lot of questions, I think.
And sometimes I feel like,
And those financial reports, making sure they're up to date, and they're accurate, and clear. And we know those things, because that's the one thing we need, we need to know the most about.
And I'm not even sure if I'm asking the right questions sometimes. Because this is, again, a situation where if I don't know what I'm supposed to be asking, I can't ask the right questions.
I think all those comments are great.
So, so the short answer to all of that would be spending more time at each meeting with the budget. And I don't mean the line-by-line kind of what we've been doing this past year. I think it needs to be an agenda item at every meeting.
I took it off for this one.
With the exception of this one. Does that sound fair? I mean,
Yes, that's fair.
And,
I also think we need to be better at making sure that the school community is a little bit more involved. I think sometimes they feel like they're not, they don't need to be part of it, or shouldn't be part of it. But as we, as we heard loudly last year, you know, some decisions were being made that people really felt hurt by. That's always going to happen, but at least if people feel like they're involved, and their voices are heard.
You know, and that's the other part of the budget. We're not involved in, in choices of any staffing positions. You know, when we're looking at a budget, we don't have people's names attached to that. Thank God. You know, I, this is hard enough, let alone adding, you know, a face and a name. And I'm not so sure the public understands that.
But there's, there's an indirect connection, though, which, you know, kind of pains us. And I know that it's painful for others as well. And again, just since we talked about transparency, and Greg, I'll use your example. Every year, when there is something going on with our budget, specials are the first on the block. And we're having these philosophical conversations about why, you know, specials should go first, how can we balance it? How can we save everything? Then, you know, the numbers add up, and we find ourselves in a situation where, you know, so what are, how are we gonna save some of these programs? How are we gonna make our school district attractive, enjoyable, pleasant for the students, for the educators, for anyone who actually partakes in this community? And that is the difficult thing. And I really don't know that there is any answer to that, looking at every other school committee, school community in the state. But we have to find some ways to mitigate some of those, some of those factors. And I don't know what, how to do that yet.
Also, for me personally, sometimes as we're looking at those positions, and we're, like, bringing the nurse position that we were talking about, we don't always understand without feedback what the actual consequence ramifications are gonna be. And so, and not that it's easy for us to make a decision, but sometimes logically, you're looking at budget, just like you would for your house budget, and you make decisions like, "Well, it's the lesser of five evils," you know? But we don't know what the consequences are for you. So to hear from you more often would help me make better decisions personally. But how do you want to hear from us? Do you want it in an email? Do you want it at the school, at these kind of meetings? However, it has to work. However, it has to work. I mean, not everybody can come here every two weeks, or you know. I think, I think it's great that you want to hear that, because you've done this, did you realize this is gonna happen? But even before, I mean, I would rather, I would like to get to a point someday, maybe, possibly, hopefully, where we're not being so reactive. I, I would like to, you know, if you hear something, like you hear us talking about, "Gosh, you know, we might have to remove that nurse position," or "We might have to..." And that's when you say, "I just want you to know that," you know, talking in my, in my group of, whether it's kindergarten, or special ed, or paras, it doesn't matter. This is how we feel it would affect us. Because I think, and we may not be able to fix it. We may not be able to say, "Oh, we can't do that then." But it would really help, because maybe there is a way. We, we all care about all of that, so.
Well, sometimes I think there are issues that sometimes, sometimes they have to happen, where they, they sort of come up, and it's like, like, "We've gotta make a decision this evening."
Right.
And sometimes that's very difficult, because we feel like we can't sometimes get all the answers. We have questions, but sometimes we don't have the right people to give us the answers. And we have a question. So sometimes, on those kind of issues, you may need to wait a couple of weeks later. I know it's not the end of the world, and then that gives us some time to really think about it. And then there's some time to try to get some feedback. You know, like, like when we wanted to cut the nurse. It's like, people come here and tell us, and it's like, "Wow." You know, not, it's not just because it's two people. We don't judge it by how many people talk about it. But just maybe they're telling us something that we hadn't thought of, that maybe the administration hadn't even thought of. You know, so it's really, to seek the input of everybody possible certainly does not hurt.
I think an answer to your question, you know, how do we deliver the message? Send it, send us all an email. You know, put everybody's, you have everybody's email address on the committee. Because, you know, if one person is going to one member of the committee, the rest of us may not even hear about that.
Because we can't talk about it.
Because we can't talk about it, and when we're, when we're coming into a meeting, we have a full agenda. And, you know, you know how that is, right? Our meetings can be three, four hours long as it is, so feel free to send each of us, just put everybody's address on it, and then send out your email. Because then, you know, if, we can get it on the agenda as an agenda item, and have a discussion in open meeting.
I will qualify it slightly. I agree with you. I just, you know, probably that's the most direct way of addressing it. If it's anything related to the school operations, school administration, then we will immediately forward it to our superintendent. That's basically where it belongs. But if you're not sure, you know, you don't know where to go, then by all means, just, you know, go ahead and send it, send, send it to us. But, you know, please know that it's gonna go almost immediately, or actually immediately, to our superintendent. On things related to those things that are within our purview, you have suggestions, you have some thoughts. Something came to you as you woke up in the middle of the night, and you said, "You know what? Wouldn't it be great if we did something like this in our school district?" Give those to us. Because if something, like we just talked about, is happening, that we come here, and we find out about something, we have to react on the spot, there is something wrong there. That means, you know, either the, something was churning in the, in the background, and it didn't really boil up to where it, it should have, in a timely manner, or there is a huge gap in that communication, and we're finding out very late. And one thing that this school committee doesn't want to do is make decisions on the spot.
We won't do it.
Right. We want to be able to ask questions. I mean, if we're gonna, we're gonna say yes or no, we want to be able to say, I mean, even, you know, those financial papers that we sign every time that you see us before every meeting, we'd like to go through and at least see, you know, what the line items are, have some, you know, rough idea of why we're signing those. Because we believe that if we're gonna put our name on something, or say yes or no for anything, we should have some understanding of those things. So there is a problem if that is coming to us at that last moment. But anything that could allow us to be proactive the way somebody said, please, by all means, at any time, just email us. I wish we had a huge wall somewhere that, you know, folks could just, whenever they thought of something, they could put a post-it, or whatever. Or we had the virtual version of it. I don't know when we're gonna get to it. But for now, just get to us in which way you can. You had your hands up.
Yeah, I'm just, I missed part of the meeting that someone wrote that said,
That was the best part, by the way.
But it kind of, well, a small part of what I wanted to talk about was actually this, like, how do I know what's happening here? Part of my problem, and one of the things I wanted to talk about was, the communication has to be more real out, right? Like, I see numbers for the budget, but it doesn't relate to me. Like, what are your top five challenges? What are, what are your top five successes, right? Can you, can you kind of put some of that information out there also? The community's got X number of people in it. Not, not anybody's gonna have the perfect idea, but maybe a whole bunch of them might come up to something that makes sense.
Yes.
Agreed.
So I don't want a word, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but are you suggesting that we should make the communication simpler, and we should maybe just narrow it down to some items? And say, you know, "We want your feedback, or we would like to talk about these things for now." Then next time, we just go move on to something. But don't just give the world to us and expect that we're gonna be able to give you feedback. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, narrow it down. I want that to straighten up. It was great, but it's, I didn't know what to kind of do. I didn't, I didn't know how to help.
Tell the story.
We've been saying that for three years. We need to provide here. So does that make sense, you know, coming to, feel free to come to the school committee, knowing that we are gonna follow a chain of command? We are gonna follow the protocol. We obviously have to keep the superintendent. That, that would be my first go-to, would be the superintendent. So, does that make sense to you?
Yep. A couple of points, you know, we'll be working with Dorothy Presser from MASC to work together in developing our relationship as we work through these issues. And what do we do when a staff member comes to school committee? How does that get communicated to me? How do we develop the trust that I'm gonna follow through with that? Whether it's an administrative issue, or just a staff member issue, that they didn't really know who to go to, whether it's personal. And they just bumped into that, I would say, big Y. But, you know, and, and how does that come to me, and how do we? So that's work that we're gonna do as we have our retreat, if you will, in our work group. The other question I would have is, I do struggle with how to communicate to the community most effectively. So for example, you know, we sent out the connect ed that invited people tonight. Maybe hopefully, some of you are here because of that. But there are some people who might have stayed home, and who are now aggravated that I sent them in. So it's always a balance. So I guess my question is, what's the best way to send out a distilled, you know, sort of story of what happened at school committee in a way that people will read and understand? Or is it a YouTube video of, you know, a school committee member? You know, what is it that people are gonna be able to, like, really get to understand what we're doing?
Like the link that then shows, like, the connect ed, or something like that. I think that works well.
Okay.
And I was also gonna ask, we keep talking about emailing school committee. I really don't know anybody on the school committee or email addresses. Is there a school committee organizational box?
It's on the, it's on the website.
It's on our website. Our email addresses are,
It's right in here.
So my suggestion was gonna be, is there a way to have a,
So my suggestion was gonna be, is there a way to have a less jargon-filled summary? For the non-educators that can access, so they can read it on the website?
On the website.
Understanding that our district's website is not the most ideal at times.
The schoolsma.net website? I can get to your work box.
Yeah, Gramby Schools MA dot org, right?
No.
Dot net.
Dot net.
Dot net.
So is that the one, is that the one that's on where the superintendent is on pictures?
Yeah.
The one that we use for all, I'm like, just felt me.
Yep, they are.
I have one more tip.
Yep.
One more here.
I have some for you. You could take, I'm just kidding.
Is that, so that's, we're gonna find the information as far as the school committee, who to address things to, as well as potentially some summary of meeting minutes there?
It's all there.
Okay.
How many of you actually use the, the website?
We try.
We try.
We like to try.
It's very hard.
Okay. So actually, that's what I would like to hear, uh, because, you know, at times even I get frustrated just finding for something. There's a good reason for that. I mean, we only have limited resources, just like everything else, and it's very difficult to revamp a website. But I know that we are all open, Dave is open to suggestions. So if you can give us what you are looking for and what you cannot find, potentially those are things that should be put, pushed to the top of the page, or make, uh, they, that should be made much more visible. Let us know, just like everything else. Don't expect that we know what everyone is looking for. I'm saying we, but just now I'm just saying the collective we. Anybody knows what are the priorities. Let someone know, uh, on the side. Uh, our superintendent will be actually the first person to go to on that kind of thing. Uh, then there will be some effort to revamp the website. There is a gap with the website. It is, it is crowded, it is, it is busy. But if you go to the top menu, there's a school committee tab. If you click on that one, you will see things related to the school committee. You will have access to the policies, uh, you will see our nice pictures, and then you will, if you click on our names, you're gonna be able to email us because they're right there.
And the minutes are there as well.
The minutes are there.
And agendas. Is, is that a tab, excuse me, is that a tab that's on like, I have a million bookmarks at this point, but, so I have one for the high school, 'cause that's where my kids are.
Oh, you gotta back up.
Yeah, it's on the district one.
It's on the district.
So you have to go to the district one first. Is there a way that we could have a tab for the school committee?
There is a tab for the school.
On each of the schools.
On each of the, on each of the school sites? Because, no offense, I'm gone past East Meadow. I don't, I, I'm not.
You don't want my site?
I think it's, I'm very excited I'm going for the school. But, um, I, I think to some extent it would be easier if I'm looking for the superintendent, I'm looking for the school committee, I'm going to the page that I always go to, and it'd be faster.
That's a good point.
Could send me right to the page that I wanted to be on.
Yep, great point. Thank you for, for the suggestion.
And we can just send suggestions in, to that?
Yeah. Honestly, you know, just, um, a- as we said, we come together, meeting to meeting, we do our homework, but we come together only meeting to meeting, and that's when we have the conversation. So if we're gonna have any brainstorming, it happens right here in front of the camera, in front of all of you. It would be awesome if you have some suggestions, some ideas, because you can brainstorm all you want outside these meetings. We can't. So you have such ideas, just shoot them over, and, you know, especially things related to things that are under our purview. Absolutely, please do that. Don't hesitate.
Sue, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of, like, confusion, where do we find information, et cetera, et cetera? And then I'm recalling Cheryl talking about she's twitting this, she's doing that. Is information in just too many places? You know, it's almost like the KISS theory, except instead of the other word at the end, just say, you know, silly. Um, and keep it in just a couple of locations.
The, the only reason I would argue with that, and being, and being somebody who, I'm a web designer and social media expert, so the re, only reason I would say no to that is that people, everyone's different. And so, some people, some people only go to Facebook, and some people only do Twitter, which to me is weird, but, you know, maybe 'cause I'm in my forties, I don't know. But like, and some people only go to the website. Some people will only get information by going to Dunkin' Donuts in the morning for the coffee crew. I mean, the, the one thing, the one thing I've always, always kind of complained about, and I've lived here all my life, is that we don't have a community bulletin board in Gramby. Because wouldn't that be nice? To have something where people could go to, you drive by it every day, and you could stop if you wanted to. So that's the only reason, knowing what I know about sales online and media, people.
Well, and that was a concern before. People were, people were giving us feedback that we weren't providing enough information, in enough sources.
Right, right.
And so, we were trying to cover all bases.
But I think, I think it don't matter how many places you put it, some people just miss it. I mean, we found that with the after-school programs. You know, our people were out putting stuff everywhere, and there were still seriously sixty percent of the parents going, I didn't know we had one. Like, we sent stuff in the mail, what do you mean? So it's just, I, I, it's just that we're all so different.
Okay.
You know, but I mean, it's a good point, and I, that's the only argument I would, I would have.
So I, I, I put it down, Kristin, as, you know, we should, we should probably ask ourselves. The, the communication that goes out there should be consistent, right? Just, you know, there should not be some different stuff going on. Going back to your point about priorities. Some folks don't care about a, a tweet that says, you know, we won the game tonight. They just wanna see the top few priorities about the school system, because that's where they have interest. So there are different types of, uh, communications that folks are interested in. So we can, we can look into whether or not we have, we have consistency at least, uh, between all those different channels that we have.
We need a free marketing expert.
Maybe a five college student.
Yeah.
Um, so related to the budget process, anything, did anything positive happen? So we said the budget process, even year over year.
Yeah, we have, we got a budget.
Yeah, we got a budget.
Okay.
And we, and we still like each other after.
We got extra money. We got extra money. That's positive.
The school committee is intact and survived.
None of us left. We didn't kill each other.
So we received extra funding?
Yeah.
I would hope that that is related to what was said earlier, that the conversation at the town meeting, or hopefully even before, helped us to put a message together that eventually, uh, um, got to these votes, that gave us additional funding. But I don't know, I don't know how realistic it is to expect that year after year. So that's another conversation that we need to have. Um, so maybe we should put that, you know, where is that? I'll, I'll get back to you, what, any more second? Crystal?
I was just thinking, in that meeting, um, where they, the town accepted the budget, but I kept hearing from the, um, finance committee that we needed to come up with a way to make money for the town, so that we could fund our schools. I think the town needs to be educated on what schools are for. They're to educate children, we're not a moneymaker. So they made it sound like we have to somehow go and get our own money. And I don't know how they perceive this that way, but I ke, I heard him kept saying that we need to get a, a search committee going on how to bring money into the town, on how to fund our schools. And I think that's something that needs to be talked about, because he kept saying it, and saying it to the townspeople. So the townspeople are now viewing the school system, or the educational system, as like, oh, they should be making their own money? No, like, we're here to educate the children, we're not a moneymaker. So I don't know, that really frustrated me, that he kept saying that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true.
That's been a conversation for as long as I've lived in this town.
A difference of philosophical views.
That's a good point, probably a reflection of everything else that is happening at the macro level as well. That, you know, self-sustaining process, which is not necessarily how we get our funding. Obviously, we are highly dependent on the state. Uh, the state is dependent on whatever is dictated upon it, but then in turn, they just, you know, mandate all those things on us. So it's a chain reaction, and we get caught in the process. But that's a, that's a very good point. It's a, it's a matter of educating folks, or reminding folks that this is an institution of education primarily, not, uh, business. That's what it is. Thank you.
I was gonna say, I was at the town meeting where extra funds were approved, and I'm just trying to figure out, what does that mean for, you know, my son in East Meadow with programs? Are still there with programs, are gone, the specials cut? I, I don't know.
So I will give you one quick answer. And with that, I will just suggest that, obviously, we did not do a great job just letting everyone know. It's one of those things. There was a list that was distributed at the town meeting, that said, if we get the funding, we're gonna get these things back.
I had it.
Okay. So as far as I know, we got those things back. So whatever was on that list, that was the purpose. And this time, actually, we tried to do that, to make sure that everybody understood. We're asking for this much extra funding, because we need all these things, and we're gonna get these things in return.
So music and bands, still?
Should be the same as last, should be the same as last year.
Yep.
Okay, that's my one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, yes. So you, you saw music there? Music is back, at, you know, at the level that was mentioned there. Uh, the physical education was one of the things. Um, the history, uh, language, I, I don't remember the list right now, but, you know, yeah.
At the high school? Uh, the shared position for reducing class size in grade three and four?
Yeah. You're talking about elementary level?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, but if, if those things are not clear, just again, one of the things that we would like to hear, how we're communicating some of those budget-related items.
I just wanted to speak to what Crystal was mentioning, and she brings up a really good point. But recently, um, the town put out like a survey, their planning board put out a survey, and some of the questions were related to what we would like to see, you know, from the town moving forward. And there were lots of opportunities to, for people to say, you know, bring in more business and, and things like that. So I'm thinking that, you know, people are starting to think about, you know, we need to do something to generate revenue, um, for the town. And she's right, it's, it's not just schools' job to generate revenue. Um, so I, I do think the town, or at least some people, are starting to think along those lines. You know, what do we need to do for ourselves as a community, um, to generate some revenue?
Is it something we can influence as a school, uh, community?
Um, the deadline is passed for the survey, so.
Oh, that's, that's, I mean, beyond the survey. Is that, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that I capture your thought here.
Um.
So are you saying that school committee should be more actively involved in such initiatives with the town, or?
I think when those conversations come up, I think it's important for the school committee to state the, the case or the point that, you know, we are not, um, here to generate revenue. Um, but a good school system does attract families and business to a community, and, and that's what we need to focus on, you know, that we provide a quality education, and that business drop for a community.
Thank you. All right. So I think one positive thing about the, I will, I will be right there. One positive thing about the budget, uh, we talked about it, maybe, you know, it's not as clear. Uh, this time, we tried to have what's called a bottom-up budget, or line-item budget, or need-based budget. Uh, it, it's the first pass in a long time, if, if ever. Again, just at least since I have been on the, on the committee, uh, the last four years. Uh, this is the first time we did it that way. So at the building level, uh, the budget reflects the needs, and it's a line-item approach to it. Uh, my guess is, and I'll be very honest, probably it wasn't perfect. But it was a, it was a good first attempt that will allow us to see where we really want to spend some, uh, funds, and where we see some potential savings, so we can move things around, or completely eliminate, or we go to the town and say, we need extra funds to be able to deliver these services. So I will add that, the, uh, need-based budget is a positive change. The one more thing that I will add, the budget process was very stressful. Uh, as Diane mentioned, things kept on changing. But we, we worked through it. So that, to me, actually, is a, is a good thing. It's, it's a, it's a, uh, despite all the stress and stuff, I don't think ever voices were raised, or anything like that. Tensions got high, uh, but we never really went in the direction of disrespecting each other within the committee, or outside the commi, uh, within the committee, outside the committee. So I think that was, that was a good sign that even when there were competing views, and, uh, there was a lot of stress, we were able to function, uh, as a committee like this should function, uh, with, with the help of our community. Yes?
I just have a question on that.
Yep.
Do you anticipate that this is gonna happen again this coming year?
Mm-hmm.
The, and the reason why I ask that is for a couple of different reasons. Obviously, you know, I do both town committee, town meeting and what have you, and it was clearly there was a lot of tension there, um, 'cause people have very strong, strong opinions. But it is reflective of the students that are, that come home, of the tension that's built upon every year. And it seems like it's been going on for years, that we've lost another teacher, and we've lost three or four teachers, and we've lost this and that, and the other thing. Um, and certainly are not enough parents here. There should be a lot more parents here being concerned. Um, but do we anticipate that coming up? Because I think that we need to, as the, the community, need to be more aware of that, and we need to participate in this process a little bit more. If you're anticipating that there's gonna be a firestorm next June, next May, because we lost a lot of very important members of our community, the teachers that are here. You know, my daughter's graduating, so in theory, you know, I have less invested in the upcoming years. But it's important to me that this community stays strong, and this community have good teachers, and have a school, and, uh, and a high school. And I think we're losing a, a lot of, not only teachers, but we're losing a lot of valuable students. Because there's anxiety year in and year out about what classes are not gonna be available, what teachers are not gonna be available. So if there, if we're gonna see that, and we're potentially gonna see that upcoming, maybe we need to have more parents involved in September, and not just in June.
I think, um, I think we've, we've, we've tried, we've attempted to make it pretty clear over this last year that, um, we just can't sustain the way that we're, we're, the district is operating for many factors that Emery's already mentioned, that we're, we're losing funding at a state level, on a state level, and we have, we have virtually no revenue coming into the town, so we're expected to do more with much less. So we have been delivering this message, I think, pretty consistently, that we have a short-term problem, that we have to try and shore up the budget every year, and we have a long-term problem that we need to resolve. And, um, so I think the short answer is, you know, we're gonna be faced, we're gonna be faced this coming year with.
So it's likely that we're gonna.
It's very likely, you know.
Yeah, it is.
We're gonna have some level of conversation.
Yes.
Uh, for the simple reason that state's funding is not changing. If, uh, you know, if it changes very minimal, um, and sometimes actually, even after we do finalize our budget, it may go in the wrong direction. In our case, we know that we have, uh, costs that, that are increasing continuously. So you have increasing costs, and you have revenue that is stagnating. Yes, uh, that, if we look at our budget the way it is right now, yes. I think our challenge is, how do we, and that's why, you know, when you all ask, can we just share all our suggestions? By all means, please, because our challenge is, how do we look at that budget differently, so that we can find different ways of, uh, offering the same education, keeping our staff intact, uh, making the school committee, a school, uh, community attractive to students, parents, and all the outsiders. That is the challenge that we're facing.
So one, one way that parents in the community can help is by going to the legislators. You know, that, that is the most effective way that a community, you know, there's, there's gonna be, uh, an amendment in November, right, about charter schools? And that's another real problem for schools, districts our size, is that we're losing kids to charter schools, and now there's, there's gonna be a vote in November for opening up more charter schools, which is gonna decimate small communities like us.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So we need your help to be going to the state government, to your local. So we need your help to be going to the state government, to your local politicians, and stating your case. Because, you know, we're only five people on a, on a committee.
That's a great suggestion, and I'm glad to volunteer and participate in that. What I would, would be helpful to me, or, and I'm sure people that don't really participate in the school committee process or haven't in the past, is that if there was a way that we could have a general meeting for the parents or some sort of meeting where at least maybe a couple of you were there, so that we, just like we have how to get your kid to college and how to get to paper college. If we had a meeting like that, because there are some great students out there and there are students that we want to keep in the school, but we're losing them left, right, and center. And it seems like it's just compounding the problem that we already have. But if we know what we can put pen to paper and do to help, I know there's been, I know I'm a part of the APTA, so I get these emails, here's your standard letter, fill it out, send it to, you know, sign your name and send it out to. If we had some form of volunteer help with that, it seems like that would be a good thing for us if we had.
We did talk about that in some of our meetings, that we need to come up with the email addresses and a form letter where we can just say, hey, send this off, sign your name, and send it off to your representatives. And again, unfortunately, you know, we're five people on a committee, so we need to figure, we do need to kind of organize, and I'm not, you know, we need to figure out a way to do that.
Maybe it would be great if we had a meeting that was like, this is what we need from you. Because there was a great group of student, high school students and parents, whatever, who stood outside of the school, and it was great and there was news, but it's gone. And if we can capitalize on some of them again and have a, you know, an open house or whatever you wanna call it, to get parents to come and say, this is what we need your help doing. If you wanna keep the school system going, this is what we need your help. And maybe we, we can write the letter, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, or it's gonna, so it's not your responsibility to write the letter for us, but it's your, it would be great if you could help us kind of create that oomph to get going and give us some guidance as to what we can do to help, because, you know, we want, we wanna help.
We will return to that very briefly, but I know that there were some hands.
Yeah, I just, you brought up a question a few minutes ago about is this something that we can persuade? I kinda think that that's what you need to do in a lot of different places. If you need to communicate out, this is a great example. I did not know about this. I don't need a form letter written for me, but just the thought that I may need to be able to do something. But in my opinion, the school committee and the school kind of control their own destiny in the, in the way they shape a lot of opinion just by getting the communication out there.
Yeah, good point. So I just wanna interject there, I know there were some other hands, but at least from my perspective, if everything goes well, we have a lot of funds, the school committees can just, you know, talk about nice things that we can do in the community and that, that will be awesome. But obviously, we are not in that situation. In fact, most of the school districts in the state, I would suggest in the country probably, are in similar situations. They are trying to do different things and sometimes they're suffering, sometimes, you know, they're losing a lot of great resources. So the reason why I'm mentioning that, I think now we are at a point where we think as a school committee that, as elected, as an elected committee, part of our job is to get involved in that political process as well. So as much as we are suggesting to you, again, this is my view, I don't know if everybody shares it, but as much as we are asking everyone to get involved in that process, to go to the legislators and, you know, talk to them and make some noise so that, you know, we are heard, especially on the western side of the state, I think it's also part of our responsibility as well to make sure that we make some noise and we talk to the people that we can reach out to, which we started doing. And you're gonna see probably more people coming to our, some of the elected officials coming to our meetings too, to have that face-to-face interaction in the coming months. But how do we connect those two sides? You, you mentioned, you know, students walked out and, you know, parents came and just they were outside. That's great, but you can only do those things so many times. How do we really turn this into an organized brainstorming process? At the end of which we say, here are some things that came out, and we go and convey those thoughts to the elected officials. If Granby does it on its own, it may or may not go anywhere. So the other opportunity that we have is to really connect with other school committees in the area that are having similar conversations. There is, there is power in numbers. And I think it was you again who mentioned, well, you mentioned the students, you know, how they are really, you know, attached to their schools. There are some student initiatives that are going on as well. You know, there are the student advisory committees at the regional level, state level and all that. We should, we can involve those students in the process too. So we can hear the community, students, school committee, and do all that. But it's gonna be an inevitable part of what we do altogether in the, in the coming, coming days. And I would assume soon enough.
How about a subcommittee for that?
Within the school?
That would be a good, I'd be in favor of a subcommittee for that.
Okay. See, Deanne typically doesn't like subcommittees, so she's, she's like, we'll take it.
I have, I have one, along these lines, I have another suggestion. For those of you who live in precinct one, Ellen Story is retiring after twenty-some years. There are about five people running for her seat. Only one of them has come to Granby. Go search the other ones out, go look it up, go search the other ones out, call them, email them, contact them, and find out what the heck they plan to do for Granby. Because we very often get lost in the fold, because, you know, Amherst and Pelham are way bigger than us. Make, and make sure that who you vote for is a person who's gonna be here, that you really feel that they have Granby's best interests at heart. You could also, if you're in precinct two, talk to John Seibek. I do it at least on a weekly basis, about other things as well, but we talk about education a lot, and I have met with every single one of those people running for office. And I live in precinct two, so it doesn't even matter to me, but I talk to them anyway, because I wanna know what they're gonna do for us. Go do that. September eighth is the primary. Go talk to them now.
But we're not endorsing anyone.
No.
Right, we can't use any of our public resources to do so.
Unless there are any hands on the side, I will just turn quickly, because I know that we are, it is going on eight o'clock. Couple of things I wanted to touch, hopefully we can wrap it up soon enough. One is, we have this strategic plan. It was really exciting, it was a community initiative. A lot of people came together and put this plan. What are some of the thoughts around that? Some pluses and gaps that you would like to share, if anything?
Well, again, that's another big question, but one thought that comes to mind is, you know, for example, the technology piece, which was, which was, you know, prioritized in the strategic plan, and that was one of the first things to go when we had the budget deficit. And so one thing I grapple with on a philosophical level is, if we're, if we're gonna go through the time and effort of creating a strategic plan, you know, and then, and then, well, we're, we're in this deficit situation and there goes a strategic plan, it's just, it's not, it doesn't reconcile well with me.
It's a, I think it's a good point that we all, we all agree with. So I don't know if, no one...
So, so the, the point is that it's not only about balancing a budget. You know, our, we're charged with creating a vision for the district based on the needs of the students and, and then hopefully creating that, putting that vision into practice. And, you know, again, using that technology as the example, it was gone. So how can we possibly meet a, the needs of our strategic plan?
That's, that's a very good point. So is everybody familiar with the strategic plan? Probably that's one of our gaps too. We should make sure that everybody sees that. So if you recall the annual town meeting, there was a conversation around strategic plan. You know, what it should be, what it should not be, and all of that. That's, you know, that's the technical stuff around it. But at the very least, I think what needs to be done is to turn, there were big suggestions around this, to turn that strategic plan into a simple set of paragraphs, maybe, that everybody can relate to. So when we talk about the strategic plan, everyone can understand what that really means to the school community, to the students, to everyone that we are proposing that to. With that, we have this four-goal strategic plan, and one of the goals was to bring up our technology infrastructure to a level where we could offer a lot more within the district. Yet the first thing, I believe it was the first thing, right? Just the first thing we decided not to even talk about, as we're talking about the budget, was a technology piece. So I completely agree that if we're not gonna stick to it, we may as well not have that item in the strategic plan. So we have to stick to what we believe is gonna take us to that future state that we came up with.
Yes, because it's, you know, my, my thought is that a strategic plan is not, it's, it's not luxury items. You know, these are, these are goals that, that we believe are crucial to moving the district forward.
Yep.
And they're not luxury items. And yet it felt as though the first pass with the budget, that it's a luxury item that's gotta go. So it, it, there's misalignment, and we either have to really take a hard look at how we're creating our strategic plan and our vision statement and our mission statement. These are not just statements in my mind.
Plus portions of that will be put into the new school, so we can't forget the technology that will be part of the new elementary school.
Yeah, but that's, you know...
So we gotta deal with that first and then with the rest later. Can't forget about it, but can't do it all at one time.
But that's, that's a good point. I think that came as, as a necessity almost, that, you know, since we could not do it any other way, then, you know, we had to postpone and include parts of the technology investment into the new structure. It doesn't change the fact that in our strategic plan, there are some dates. And we already missed those, some of those deadlines, because we thought we could do it and we couldn't do it. And it goes back to, you know, all the points that you were making. We're not generating revenue, but we also have to show everyone or explain to everyone what the value of the stuff that we're asking for will be. And what, what is it gonna add to our students, what is it gonna add to our community? And we have to, we have to be able to explain that. And sometimes it's not the easiest thing to do. That's why we need a lot of, a lot of help. Anything on, anything else on the strategic plan? Okay. If you're not familiar with it, I would encourage everyone to go to the district website. You immediately see that, exactly, it's on the agenda as well, we have it on the agenda each time. That our new mission, new vision, you know, if you disagree with it or if you think that it's not clear, let us know as well. Anything is subject to change and should be. That's why, you know, that's why we're having all these conversations, so don't hesitate to let us know. So I wanna wrap with two things in one. One is related to something that we talked about, communication. Are we having the right amount of communication? And I'm gonna go back to something that you touched upon earlier. It seems to me, and I'm gonna actually credit you for, for this, because, you know, you mentioned this before as well. We have these long meetings, even today, you know, just I said about one hour, we are, you know, one hour something over. It is really difficult to, to keep ourselves from getting into certain things in these meetings. Some of them are potentially of administrative nature. So if we can get to the point where we say, you know what, we just wanna hear what's happening and we trust that and we're gonna hear it from you, but we devote a good chunk of our meetings to things that are under our purview, primarily the budget, primarily the policies, primarily the strategy. I think that's gonna take a good chunk of our time anyway. And we can, I think that's gonna our gap. We all get passionate and we all like talking about these things, and time goes by. So I think we have to rearrange our agenda in such a way that it focuses on the budget, on the strategy, and on the, on the policies.
And you had mentioned a few weeks back about maybe sending us weekly or bi-weekly emails, just kind of funneling information to us, but less agenda items on each meeting. And I think that will help us to drill down more in whatever topic we're discussing. Because sometimes it feels as though we scratched the surface of something and then we're, well, we gotta move on, because we have nine other items on the agenda and...
We can't really get, really understand anything, because...
And we don't solve the problem. We sort of kick down the road and say, okay, well, let's put it on the next agenda and we'll discuss it more. And I think, and then before you know it, I have a paper like this called Follow-Up, because there's so many open-ended items that, you know, we don't button up.
Yeah. Yep. The last thing is related to the policies, and I just wanted to bring that back, because it was mentioned a couple of times. What, what are some of the thoughts, some of your thoughts around our policies, around school policies? Are we missing anything in there or just our communication to the school community overall? Is there anything that we shouldn't be doing differently?
I think, I think one thing that needs to be communicated is the difference between school committee policy and administrative policy. Because I think sometimes changes are made administratively, but it really had nothing to do with us. And so, and, and nobody can figure out, nobody knows, because it's not communicated. It goes really back to communication, so I think, I think that needs to be made more clear.
I think we're at a, any other thoughts on this?
People should just know that we are, again, we're updating our policy manual. So whatever, what you see on the website now is changing, because we are definitely going through it.
Try, in, in an effort to streamline it.
Yes.
Make it more clear.
And make it comprehensive, but less wordy and more clear.
Let's divide on the website what your roles and responsibilities are, because that would be helpful. If I'm going in tonight to look at the strategic plan and policies, if it was right there. These are our roles and responsibilities, this is in our purview.
As a school committee overall?
Yes, so...
We can actually, I, I jot it down not once. It looks like it may be a valuable thing to add there.
Seems to be a problem being able to communicate that to everyone outside of staff. Just put it right there.
So anything else as we wrap up?
I just have one quick question. I know the students here at that base school pay for parking. I know the town gets it. So why does this school get it? I'm really confused on that. I know it's been happening for years and years and years since I went here, because I graduated in 2001. I just don't understand why the town is getting that money. It's not going to any kind of scholarship for the students. It's not going back into the school, but yet we have to ask the town for money every single year. And when they say that the town plows the driveways, it's always the people that I see on site that are plowing it. Like Chat and there's another gentleman, I can't remember his name right now. But they're always plowing, they're always snowblowing, they're always salving. But, so I don't really understand why the town gets that money.
Can we have the finance? Thanks.
The town doesn't. It actually goes into a school revolving account that is used to offset the cost for plowing the parking.
Okay, and it's the, it's the people that work here that plow it, correct?
Yes, correct.
So it pays their salary, is what you're saying?
Yes, and it offsets, correct.
Okay.
So for overtime...
That makes sense, because even the kids think that the town gets the money. And I've plowed it for years, and the kids are like, why are we paying the park? If the town is gonna take the money. But, so that makes more sense now, so the school gets the money back.
It gets deposited with the town treasurer, but in a school revolving account.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank, thank you for the question, I appreciate it. Okay, so, thank you all very much for, for coming, for being here. Honestly, we... Honestly, we did not really know which format was going to be most suitable, so this is our first attempt to having these conversations. Don't stop with this. If you get to talk to other folks, please let them know that we're open, open to any feedback. We don't, I don't know if you made or you made the point that we don't take anything personally. I think it is obvious that we're all working for the same objectives in our own ways. So don't hesitate to let us know what you're thinking. We don't think any idea is better or worse than the other, any idea is more valuable than the other, just let us know. If you have anything related to the schools, our superintendent is always there to hear about those, but let's just keep this conversation going. Again, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you have any notes that you jotted down on the post-its, you can just, you know, go and stick it on the board, you don't have to run it by me.
You do. You're more than welcome to stay.
Yeah, you can stay.
We'll be on half an hour.
Yeah?
I'll be asleep by then.
All right. All right, so let's continue our meeting. We just had our session, but was there anyone who actually wanted to talk about something else, who's here for the visitor comment? Okay, so we'll move on. New business. Cheryl.
New business. So I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our newest member of the administrative staff, that is Mr. William Latoy, who is coming on board to the Granby Public Schools as our elementary principal of West Street School and East Meadow School. That is until we have a new building in 2018. So, Mr. Latoy, do you want to say hi? I always like to put Bill on the spot.
Thank you very much. How are you? Great, thank you. I understand I have big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Good to see you, Bill.
You can do it.
Great things, so...
Do you want to take a seat?
Sure. Anybody have questions, or?
Did you want to just tell us yourself a little bit?
So, it's a pleasure to be here. I began teaching many years ago in the junior high level, and then went on to administration and was an administrator in both the middle school level, five through eight, and the elementary levels, one through five school. And I was drawn to Granby by the commitment to the students and this building project, and just the staff in general, and everything that I've, I've come across so far shows that there's a great commitment to that. And being part of this building project seems, it's just great to be part of this, and to be able to tie in the education that the students are already receiving with that 21st century environment that's going to be there, and then be able to combine those two together, bring both teams together from both schools, and, and really have a dynamic learning environment. So, you know, thank you for that opportunity.
Looking forward to it. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the committee? Cool. Well, we'll talk to you more often.
Absolutely. I look forward to it, and I communicate often, so just so that's there. I'll, I'll send letters and connectids and all sorts of things, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would also like to take the opportunity again to thank the search committee. They worked under a very tight time constraint, but were very open and very collaborative. They worked very hard to create sort of a sketch, if you will, of characteristics that they were looking for, and they really took that seriously as they interviewed each candidate, and then discussed each candidacy, and the, the fit moving forward for the school. So teachers and families and parents and students, you were well represented by the committee, and very pleased to welcome Bill. And in the effort of transparency, I've worked with Bill before in Southbridge, and know that he is an administrator that's in the classroom. He knows every one of his students. He is the kind of administrator that is involved in interventions for his students, so students who may need a timeout, they'll get to go play basketball. And they will beat Mr. Latoy, and, and that's okay. But he is absolutely a man of integrity and pleased to have him on board.
Cool. So I'll ask a trivial one. Do you go by William or Bill?
Uh, Bill.
Bill?
Please, yeah.
Because, you know, I got a call from a reporter, and I said, we have a new principal, and she said, what's his name? I said, I couldn't tell you really. I don't know whether he goes by Bill, I couldn't, you know, pronounce your last name, last name, so last name is...
Latoy.
Okay.
In, in French, it would be Latoy, like Versailles, but...
Which is what I said, but...
Exactly. Um, you know, coming from a French Canadian community, it was always pronounced Latoy through the years, and, and honoring my grandparents and the legacy of my family, we've kept it with Latoy, so...
Cool. All right. Thank you.
And lastly, instead of the T-shirt, I would love a tie, you know, that, that would have all of the checklists on it and things like that.
Nice.
If I could put that request in, it'd be something I could wear to work. I don't see myself on it. I could wear the T-shirt to work, but you wouldn't see it underneath, so...
Right. Okay, a tie.
The tie would be great.
Okay, all right. I will take it under consideration.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So next, we have the OWL curriculum.
Can we just suggest something? Can we just put the lights on?
Yeah, that's fine. Well, it got dark outside, I think, finally, so...
Yes.
Unfortunately, Carol Hepworth couldn't be with us this evening, but she felt that I could adequately discuss the curriculum request for preschool, so...
I'll wait for him.
Yay!
Much better.
I throw the lights. All right.
So I included in your information Carol's request and some of the reasoning for that, but I did want to say, to answer a few of the questions that I had received, this purchase would be funded through the FY16 pre-K revolving account, so it has no budget implication for FY17. When Carol had gone out into the preschool, done some observation, because she is observing, of course, special education students in our, in our specialized programming, and also our general ed students, what she found was that there was no curriculum at the pre-K level, and in talking with the pre-K staff, they participated in district curriculum writing, but it was really focused on the science last year, as you know, and they really worked more on the kindergarten and first grade and elementary writing. And what the OWL curriculum can do is really provide a foundation of pre-K curriculum for the staff, and really focuses on the whole child. So readiness-to-learn strategies, readiness-to-be-in-school strategies, in addition to real basic numeracy and literacy skills. That in tandem with our TS Gold assessment can really give us a good idea of are students ready to learn, and if they're not, how can we intervene early? Because we know the research shows if we intervene early, we can catch kids up so that they are prepared to do some of the more rigorous work at kindergarten and first grade, because we also know that learning has become more rigorous at those younger levels. Finally, I think it provides support to the teachers who have been creating some of this curriculum on the fly as they've been going along, and it creates and gives them also the resources, the manipulatives, the puppets, the books that go along with the lessons. And lastly, it really provides a structure for the day. So students, both general education students and special education students, get accustomed to a pretty standardized routine of the classroom that they can expect, and for many of our special education students, that's very important, that they know what to expect when they're coming into the classroom every day. So that's some of the general overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is the staff on board with this?
Yes.
So they've been, they've been part of the process?
Yes.
Training? How's the training going to occur?
So the training is part of the proposal, and we didn't want to plan anything yet, but there will be professional development time, whether it's, you know, during our PD days, or our, some of our curriculum days, we would be able to provide the training.
So they're going to hit the ground running for the first day of school with this?
We'd like to purchase it for the first day of school, yes. That's why I put it in your packets and was requesting a vote today. It may allow us to do the professional development, or part of it on the 29th, but we didn't want to schedule anything until we had...
And what is the cost, even though it's coming out? What is the cost?
It's about $7,500, I believe. I don't have the purchase order with me.
About $8,000?
Yeah.
Does that include the training?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
And if we're using that revolving account money for that, what, was that money going to be used for something else that now will not be able to be used?
Not that I'm aware of. When Carol started to investigate the potential, we worked with the finance department to see where potential funding was available to us, so... Correct me if I'm wrong.
This is the first I've heard of a number associated with it, so this would also have to be one of those things that has a first reading and then a vote at a subsequent meeting to approve a curriculum. So, you know, tonight, technically, you would not be able to approve it. You could do a first reading and then approve it at the next meeting.
We, we've never had a printed curriculum? I mean, we've done reading, math stuff, what have the, what have they been involved in? How is that, how's that been dovetailing into kindergarten and so on? I guess I have trouble with that. Well, they just weren't doing what they wanted to do, there was some...
No, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, they worked in curriculum committees, but not with specific focus on a pre-K curriculum or developing a pre-K curriculum.
I'm curious as to why the teachers are in favor of this particular curriculum.
You know, first of all, I have experience implementing it, so it has been viewed as child-centered, whole-child, with, with a focus on science in addition to literacy and numeracy, and the overall structure of the day, which allows for centers and circle and song time and play time. It incorporates the best parts of pre-K instruction with more targeted instruction at that level.
Yeah, that's, that, I, I'm, that is definitely my concern, because as I'm reading through this, I'm thinking, my God, where, where's the creativity in pre-K? You know, it's...
So in this, yeah, so in the centers, they're still doing things like home play, they're still doing things like songs, and they're still, you know, they still have freedom within the day to go to centers, but there's structured times of the day where lessons are given, very specific lessons from the teachers to the students.
And as I was reading through the research, even Pearson, I didn't get the sense was over the top with their own numbers on, on the, the outcomes of this. And they're, they're, and I don't, this seemed like it was 2009, or, you know, it was, it was slightly older, and that there was another study that they were working on to see if, if this was actually demonstrating what they designed it to demonstrate. So I don't know if it was just me as I was reading through this, but I, I, I just wasn't over the top about it. I don't know if I'm missing something, but it, and, and I wasn't quite convinced that it was hitting our target population. It seemed like it was more designed, their study was based more on underserved populations and people of color, and I'm not suggesting one is right or wrong, it's just, is this the right curriculum for our, our student population? So I just had a lot of questions, so, I don't know. Anybody else have any thoughts?
You know, similar to, first of all, I think I mentioned to, over the phone, that one Pearson has mentioned, we, now we get a little skeptical, and just we want to really, you know, dig a little deeper, for a variety of reasons. But, you know, when we put that aside and try to understand what this will add to the way we offer education or provide education to the students, that was basically what I was thinking about also, that what we're doing right now versus what this is going to bring, first of all, is it really, what is it really adding? But I understand, you know, if there's no curriculum, no curriculum versus curriculum is, is different. But I'm assuming we're doing something that connects pre-K to kindergarten at one point, so there's some connection, there is some holistic approach, even if it's makeshift, there is a holistic approach. I'm hoping that's the case. The other thing is, again, based on the quick reading of the documents, is it really the best curriculum for a setting like this? All that said, I found something a little more recent in terms of valuation of these curricula. It is done by University of Virginia's National Center on Quality Teaching and Learning. And there are several curricula that are tried, and this was evaluating all of them, it's a 90-plus-page evaluation, and I honestly, to be honest, I only went through the tabulated pages. Looks like they like this one compared to the others, and some of the factors that they're looking at are grounded in child development principles, it is evidence-based, effects on child outcome is measurable, comprehensive across learning domains, depth of each, depth for each covered learning domain is measured, specific learning goals are, are there, well-designed learning activities, so on and so forth. They have a lot, and across all those, they seem to like this one more than the others. But, again, just going back to the initial question, when you look at some of these, were those really our gaps? And if not, then when you look at the other curricula, then you find that there is an abundance of possibility out there. Again, not being an educator who can make a decision on which curriculum would be most suitable, I wasn't able to really convince myself this is something that we should move to. Of course, as we discussed, I mentioned the financial concerns that the committee would have as well. I, um, so are we saying that without really knowing we have a revolving, knowing that we were going to go in this direction, we have something in our revolving fund that is specifically earmarked for this type of expense? Or are we going to spend money that could expend for something else for pre-K populations?
My understanding is that that money had not been earmarked for anything moving forward, that it was available.
Okay. So why are we, why are we...
Does it have to be only used for preschool?
It's the pre-K revolving account.
So some of that must be used for something now.
Correct. We do use it for our offsetting preschool teachers or various other parent professionals for preschool. Just a matter of verifying the balances as we're going through the year-end close to make sure that, that those funds are there.
Getting back to what the statement you made before about that preschool teachers were involved in the curriculum, but it was more focused on kindergarten? Is that what you said? I'm, I'm wondering, would they rather create their own curriculum? Would they rather work, you know, together as a group? You know, again, I guess my concern is, I'm looking at this, and it's just, it's more evidence-based, it's more science this, it's more, you know, and is that the right, I don't know, is that...
Well, I, I think the, the balances and the question is, do you want to have teachers who are spending a majority of their time with the quality of the instruction they're providing, or the implementation of a curriculum, or spending more time designing and writing curriculum? Because there's nothing right now. And so they're going in, and the classes are different, they're doing different things in different classrooms. This is a way to, I think, unify the approach and have a... This is a way to, I think, unify the approach and have a collaborative conversation about how is the instruction and what are our students learning, as opposed to the discussion of, we've got to create all of these activities and lessons.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Right.
Is that, is that a question that needs to be asked of them, as opposed to us mandating, well, here's your curriculum, go teach it? I don't know. When I look at a preschool, at the preschool level, that's where they're just starting out. I don't, I'm...
I will say they were excited about the possibility, so.
And this is just, again, just because I want clarity, this is just preschool?
Correct.
Kids who are three and four-year-olds?
Mm-hmm.
And how many are we talking?
We have two pre-K classrooms.
Yeah, a three-year-old classroom that's half-time and a four-year-old classroom that's full-day.
And it was, again, just, just because Carol had been in there looking, this is where this is now, all of a sudden blown up and buffaloed up and said, well, we don't have anything, so we need to get something?
I think it's good practice. I mean, you know, you're, when administrators are coming into the district and we see a need, we see a struggle on the part of a classroom teacher, we see a struggle with some of our students being successful. One of the things we do look at is the instructional program, the agenda of the day, is it appropriate? And then, you know, the curriculum, what is it that we're actually teaching? Are we resourced to do that? And so I think in, you know, observing, we found that there's a lack of the curriculum at the pre-K level. And this was a way to address that.
Which I guess I respect.
Right, no, I understand. I don't take it personal either.
Yeah.
Yep.
In my mind, I just have trouble, we've had kids coming there and they've been doing something in the time they're there, and now all of a sudden this comes in, which I see is, you know, probably very good, but there's just a lot of stuff in here.
There is.
There's no way that they're going to do, like in any curriculum, anything you buy, it's like, there's no way you get through all that stuff.
Yep.
So how do they narrow it down to realize if we, if we have to do, as Judy said, we can't do it tonight, but we're going to, here we get a chance to think about it for another few weeks or so?
Sure.
What information do we need to go to get in the next couple of weeks or so?
I think, you know, one of the things to consider also, I lost my train of thought, oops. Don't you hate that? I need more chocolate.
Here, there you go. It'll come back.
It'll come back, probably on my drive home.
Yeah, you know, again, I think it was, there was a part of me that as I was looking at this curriculum was, with just such little kids, you know, I guess I was, my concern was, are we taking any, are we taking the creativity out of this preschool learning environment? And just starting them that much younger, jamming curriculum down their throats? Because that was my initial thought when I looked at this. I was a little overwhelmed. And if you're saying no, the teachers are on board and...
Carol, just to better understand, sorry, go ahead.
So my thought was, because I did remember it, I think that in general, we do need to address the pre-K program and what we offer, and whether it's enough, whether it meets the needs of the community, whether or not there are three-year-olds that would prefer a full day because they're ready for that, whether there are three-and-a-half-year-olds that could work with four-year-olds. I think that the program in general is going through some growing pains, and we need to, you know, grow with that program and, in fact, consider it as a way to, you know, help our youngest children develop the readiness to learn skills, so that they can be successful and not behind once they meet kindergarten.
So that's what I wanted to ask. Is this in response to anything that we are seeing, that, you know, preschool students are going into kindergarten or later years, there is something that is missing, there's a gap, and we believe that this particular curriculum will address that? That's one. The other thing is this, you mentioned that there was excitement on the part of preschool How about the kindergarten side or, you know, other folks who will eventually receive these students? Do they think that this is bringing that holistic view so that whatever we are offering early on is carrying over and is well-connected with whatever, say, kindergarten teachers are going to be providing the following year?
So one of the things that I need to do with Carol and the administrative team is really look at how we are benchmarking students to know that they're making effective progress. So to one degree, I can't answer your question, because I'm not, I don't know what we're doing currently to benchmark and assess students. I haven't been through a year with, you know, what assessments we're using, and then, in fact, analyzing the results of those and going back and talking about, you know, are these assessments giving us the information that we need? That really is the work of this year. What I can say is that when I have implemented the program prior, it does fill the gaps. And what we do see is that students who participate in the curriculum versus students who participate in a different pre-K program, typically a private program, they score better on entrance criteria for kindergarten. Now, I don't know what our entrance criteria for kindergarten is. That's one of the first conversations that we're going to have at the retreat around assessments. But that would be an outcome that you would want to see as a result of implementing a curriculum at pre-K, is that students score ready to learn for kindergarten.
You've implemented this before.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think this is too much of a rush to get this in? It's now mid-August now, and people have not seen it yet? Is that, is that just another factor or not, from your viewpoint, from your experience of implementing it?
I, my, I think they were excited. I think that, again, because it's child-centered, because the lessons are developmentally appropriate, there's an owl puppet, there's songs that they sing, it isn't that the curriculum is they're sitting in desks and writing. It's all about readiness to learn and basic numeracy and basic literacy. So the teachers were excited, you know. Is it a rush? I mean, if you have nothing, you know, I don't know if it's a rush.
I'm sure it's very teacher-friendly, you know, it's not, we don't have new teachers in, what's the, what's the level of expertise of our preschool teachers, are they?
So we have a kindergarten teacher who is now at the pre-K level, and we have a pre-K teacher who's done basically pre-K.
With, for a few years, so then we're not talking brand-new teachers?
No.
Kind of, just from their past experience, okay?
Yep.
Helpful information.
Sure.
So the financial impact of this, roughly eight thousand dollars? You mentioned something, Andy, about...
Just a little checking with the year-end close and the way everything else is, I'll say, flushing out, that there are funds available. We still have some hirings going on, you know, and so it's just a matter of verifying that, again, the seventy-five hundred dollars is not spoken for, so.
And we're not a hundred percent certain of that? Is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I mean, because this is a time of year where, as I've said before, we spend the entire summer rebuilding the budget from scratch, I say, with all the changes. Now, could we find seventy-five hundred if it's not there? I'm not saying that we couldn't, but it would then have an impact.
On FY seventeen, yep.
So it's just a matter of, if you're, you know, talking about it now, if the discussion goes into the next meeting, by the next meeting, we'll definitely have a verified, you know, amount or where it would potentially come from that would have an impact, if any.
Murray?
Coming from a completely different angle, because I work in an organization with an early childhood department, and I follow their work closely, I will say that I've heard good things about this curriculum, so it didn't, when I saw it, it didn't scare me. But the other thing I would say is that with my ear to the ground and listening to parents who have preschool kids who have left the district because of what they felt was something lacking in that program, I think it would be wise to have a curriculum that we follow.
Well, we need to have a curriculum, there's no doubt. I, I guess...
And having teachers come up with their own, I mean, while sometimes that can be empowering when you're in the middle of it, it's really not. It's actually way more stressful, in my experience.
Well, you know, I think, you know, to your point, Deanne, one of the things is, if you have a foundation, then you can bring in some of your expertise and some of the units that you have already worked with, a story that you found particularly engaging for students in Granby. But to have nothing, and to start, you know, with, with that, and to have two classrooms running and not have a common curriculum to discuss and to talk about.
Well, having nothing is, to be honest with you, surprising to me.
Well, I should preface, the teachers have been doing their own.
Right.
And creating their own. And...
Andy, that's one of the things that I wanted to ask about. A curriculum is a standard. We're all doing it a certain way with these objectives, right? And, you know, there are, what, six things or whatever it might be, five, six things in this one core pillars, and then we're shooting for that. I'm wondering, for instance, in the example that you just shared, you know, folks thinking that the pre-K was, you know, lacking, does it mean that kindergarten has similar issues? Why would someone go through pre-K and now they get to kindergarten where, obviously, you know, we do have a curriculum, at least, you know, as far as I know? Why would someone leave the district after having gone through the pre-K year, and now they're actually going to go into something that is more structured and, you know, better established? So I'm curious about all the feedback that we're receiving, but what it does is this, especially following up on the earlier conversation that we had, how we tend to find ourselves in a position where we have to make quick decisions. I think this is one of those instances. Honestly, this could be the best thing ever, or may not be the suitable thing. Based on the quick review, I don't find myself in a position to be able to make that decision. That said, since, especially following up on what Judy said, since this could not be the voting meeting anymore, one question that I have for the committee, should we just keep this and make this our first reading? Hopefully Carol will be here next time, so we can revisit and ask some of the questions that we had, and maybe, you know, she would have a different answer or different perspective on things. Then based on that, we can make a decision. So my last question was that, with all that, what happens if we don't approve this? What are we really giving to our students that may make us think that something is really a huge gap? Is there such a thing? Or things are working fine, but this is bringing improvement to how we are doing things today? Or if we don't do this, are we going to see a major impact for not having an established curriculum this coming year?
I think what I'd like to do is bring those questions to Carol, and I think speak to the staff about exactly, you know, so you have a better picture of what the impact would be.
Okay, that's fair.
I think another thing that we need to start asking when we look at these things is, how does it impact our strategic plan? We need to start making that part of our culture. How does this work?
Yeah, how does it align with the strategic plan? Because one of the, one of the four goals is related to curriculum, you know, pre-K through twelve curricula, so I thank you for that. That's a good idea.
Well, and your background is critical, right? So clearly have that in mind at all times anyway, I suspect.
Also know if the money situation's...
Yes, the financial impact, I think, for the next meeting is important.
And I would actually go one step, and I think it was, it was mentioned, but just to make sure, even if we do have the funds for this, let's just make sure that by taking that money from the revolving fund, we're not really negatively impacting something else, that, you know, that money was there to be spent, I'm sure it's going to be.
Got that?
And thank you.
My pleasure, yep.
Carol just came in, I know that she, you know, she was fast and furious, looking at all opportunities, and she wants to, you know, put her signature on certain things because she's going to own it. Much appreciate that, but, you know, let's just have some more conversations, and maybe, you know, we can postpone it a little bit and approve it a little later, this or another curriculum as you suggest.
Lead teacher, so I just wanted to update you on work that I'm doing with Kristin Nagliari, Nagliari, sorry, Kristin, regarding the lead teacher position and the team leader position. With the hire of Mr. Latoy, we will not be using an assistant principal in the elementary schools, and we are going to be working to create the lead teacher position that encompasses a little bit of instruction and curriculum, and also a little bit of management in the case that Mr. Latoy is not in the building. So I just want to make you aware that we're having those discussions, and we'll be coming forward, or I'll be coming forward to you with some suggestions around job description. So I just wanted to make you aware. Okay?
I don't know if I missed it, can you just tell me a little bit about the reasoning?
Those are change, right?
I feel like I missed something.
Yep, yep. So, with the budget, the way it was, the funding with the loss of K was the funding source for the assistant principal position that was going to be shared. It also, the K grant funds part of a teacher, so the decision was made to pull back on the assistant principal and go with the lead teacher. When I spoke with all of the candidates, all the finalists, I made it aware to them that we were not able to fund the assistant principal, and that would be the job, it would be in both, both buildings.
So Murray just jumped in and asked the great question. If we could, going forward, when we have changes of this nature, we can just focus on why?
Sure.
And what gaps we're trying to close by, you know, bringing these changes? And the financial side, obviously, you know, just what that means to us, that would, that would help the conversation tremendously. But since you brought it up, I will ask out of curiosity, we have the kindergarten grant in past years, I don't know how many years in a row. Why, why, were we denied that grant? Why don't we?
No, the state did not fund the grant.
The state didn't fund it.
State doesn't fund it at all?
Pulled it back.
So that's basically across the entire Commonwealth?
They had been threatening that for years, and they finally pulled the trigger. It was really to establish full-day kindergarten, and once communities had done that, that's sort of the MO, they pull back that funding, even though we, as a small district, become very reliant on that funding source.
And the lead teacher, you're looking at a lead teacher in each of the elementary buildings?
Yep, and talking with Andy right now about that, funding for that and how we can parcel that together.
Is that something that was in, that was in the contract in the past, right?
It is.
There's one called a head teacher?
It's current, I'm sorry, it's a head teacher, yes.
That's what you're working for, right?
Mm-hmm.
That extra stipend that was in the, probably still in the teacher's contract, right?
It is still in the teacher's contract.
So you, why do you have to, well, that's what it is, right?
So we eliminated team leaders.
Yep.
And in working with Mr. Latoy, the idea is to make sure that not only do we have a head teacher that can handle, let's say, a student behavioral issue, but also is there to be a liaison for the instructional program and the curriculum, to not just have someone there who's going to handle a crisis, but can help communicate what the curricular needs and what the instructional needs are. And bringing the two schools together with two lead teachers is a way to really facilitate that conversation, so that teachers have not only bill to go to, but a lead or a head teacher.
So more is going to be expected of them than in the past?
Yes.
Because there's to be, there's no team leaders, and they're going to be the team leaders almost as well.
A bit of the team leader, correct, right.
And it's going to be in each school?
Yes, that's the goal.
And you feel confident that you're going to be able to find a person in each school that will have those qualities and qualifications?
Yes, I mean, really, you're looking for that teacher leader. In Granby, we have a plethora of teacher leaders, people who step up to the plate, who are well-versed, well-respected in curriculum and instruction, but also in handling student behavioral issues, or, you know, a parent that might come in that's upset. but also in handling student behavioral issues or, you know, a parent that might come in, that's upset.
I think we partially, to be fair, we partially had this conversation before when we, you know, proposed that there should be one assistant principal across the entire district. So that, you know, we're considering different scenarios where that individual would get some support at the building level. So I recall having the conversation, but this is a little different than.
Because this is sort of the job position now that would fill the gap, if you will, of not having the assistant principal district-wide.
So the job description that you're talking about creating is a job description that will translate to each of the schools?
Same position, but in each of the schools.
So are we going to continue?
You're close on that, you think? You're close on getting that settled before school?
Well, we won't be able to get it before school because our first committee meeting, you would have to vote that new job description. And I would have to work a memorandum of understanding with the union around.
Hopefully by October or something.
Mm-hmm, I would say mid-September would, if you could take the vote, if you were comfortable taking the vote on the new job position. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Cheryl. So we're moving to whole business.
So NIASC, we're going to wait until the committee is, you're not?
No, I'm not sure.
Right, yeah. So NIASC, Jonathan needs to get his committee together once school starts. And they'll put together a presentation for a school committee around what they're doing to implement strategies to deal with the report findings. It's just there because we're waiting for school to start and for teachers to get back.
Along the same lines. Whatever opportunities we were told we have by NIASC, if there is anything, and I'm sure, I'm guessing that there might be some things that we may be able to support, whatever level of support that may be, please let us know. Because there was some reference to the communication or connections or relationships within the school system and all that stuff. If there is anything, you know, in the spirit of the conversation that we had earlier, if there's anything that we can get involved in or should get involved in, let us know to the extent that we should. Otherwise, we'll be happy to hear when, you know, everybody's back and.
Well, why are you happy just because you brought it? There was the issue on making sure that you have enough of classroom curriculum materials. That was an issue that they highlighted here that some of that, is that, are you set?
Yeah, really ecstatic.
With the order that was done for September now, with school starting? Or you have what you need to start with, I hope?
I'm ecstatic in terms of what's been approved, what's been ordered, you know, through microscopes, to blinds, to projectors, to whiteboards. I mean, we really spent the summer, you know, even if we just secured a grant with the PTO with David's help for about $5,000 to upgrade technology, which the junior center high school were really excited about. So, I mean, absolutely, I'd be happy to come, you know, to the committee in early September with our co-chairs, Mr. Bernash and Mrs. Swisstack, and give you an update around. In fact, if you look at my, our school improvement plan, you'll see that around those four areas of curriculum, technology, budget, and facilities, that our focus for this coming school year is really on addressing that special progress report that needs to be completed by April. So, I mean, that's, and it's really, absolutely, we need to base out because much of what we talked about earlier today is really, it dovetails into everything that we're looking at, from budget to curriculum to those key areas. So, you know, I'd be happy to come early September and tell you about, you know, what's been done. And even around, a lot of the work that we did last year around budget planning and around curriculum, really, you know, if you talk to our staff, it was really, you know, it's there in terms of what we started in the past six months or so.
Well, I just, I saw that, you know, that it's integrated with fidelity to making sure that if you don't have it to start in September, it's not going to come in April, you know? So if you don't have it now, so hopefully that's a good start.
Yeah, really excited about what we have, what we've been able to secure through our, once again, goes back to what we did last year around budgeting, that's, you know, zero-based budgeting needs and ordering a lot of things that I think the teachers are really going to be ecstatic about, from curriculum materials, textbooks, you name it. It was really a good summer in terms of getting a lot done and getting ready for the start of the year.
Thank you. The handbook?
Handbooks. I believe you had taken a vote last meeting to approve pending the review of.
The review, conversion, yeah.
So we are all set. And they've been printed, and they'll be put up on the websites, so.
Ready to go.
Yep, and strategic plan review and alignment, I don't know. When we speak with Dorothy Presser, it may be a standing agenda item that we have protocol to use so that maybe we're addressing what you want to in terms of how is the district moving forward in the strategic plan?
So just like with any strategic plan and, you know, Judy partly asked some thoughts on this one too as she supported the process. As we go forward, we have to determine whether or not those things that those tactical pieces that we put in place, they're really helping us to get to the objectives that we set. If not, we should have good conversations and see how we can make changes and then implement those in a way that will allow us to achieve our goals. Aside from that one thing, for instance, that, that item, that standing item would be very helpful with. I just heard, for instance, that there was a $5,000 grant that will be used for technology purposes. So from my perspective, I'm going with the thought that, you know what, we failed, just we did not really get any money. If we can really connect, you know, all these different stories, like Marie said, in the context of another item earlier, how do those things that we do relate to the strategic plan? What are those changes that we're making, the money that we're spending? Do they allow us to make some way towards our goals? I think that will be very helpful. So maybe next time we can find out what we're doing with the $5,000. What is really getting to us? And that may allow us to reprioritize certain things that are under that particular goal. And if we took care of something, that's good, then we can prioritize something else and see if we can get funds to be able to do those. In the same vein, Jim mentioned earlier that the school building project allowed us to be able to postpone some of those expenses and, you know, have the hub, for instance, as far as I remember, in the new school. But what does it mean with respect to the strategic, the goal that we had in the strategic plan? Which items are being addressed, to what level? Does it require us to make some changes? That's what personally I'm looking for in a conversation related to the strategic plan. But there are different flavors of the conversation that we can talk about. And it would be great if we can bring it up when, what's her name?
Dorothy Presser.
Dorothy, when Dorothy comes over and we have a conversation. Excellent, cool. Well, that was quick.
Yeah. Well, you hogged the first half of the meeting, so. I don't have much time left.
Yeah.
Okay, so understanding reports, is that where we're at?
Yes.
So I wanted to say thank you to our custodians and the facilities crew who are working hard to put the finishing touches on our buildings and grounds for the upcoming school year. Although it's been a hot few weeks, the buildings are just about ready for our incoming students. So thank you to them for their hard work. As you know, I am very pleased to welcome William Latoy to the Granby Public Schools as our new elementary principal for West Street School and East Meadow School. Again, I would like to thank the search committee for their time and expertise. Each member brought a unique perspective to the committee. Bill has hit the ground running, and I look forward to working with him and the team this school year. So welcome, Bill. I'll work on the tie, and I was thinking about some really swanky running shoes, but, you know, we'll have to see what the budget can do for us, I'm just kidding. I did want to let the committee know that I attended the second session of the new superintendent induction program. This was a very fruitful, if not long, day as we worked with other superintendents and mentors from the Commonwealth. As you are hearing in conversations with many groups, addressing social-emotional learning needs of our students and creating safe, supportive learning environments for all of our students continues to be a focus point. Throughout our administrative retreat tomorrow and Wednesday, we will be reviewing our policies and procedures and discussing our school and district culture and climate so that we can address concerns specific to Granby. We will also be collaborating with our police and fire departments and continue to develop a network of community support services to address social-emotional learning needs of our students. Granby has a longstanding commitment to the community and one that is clearly evident in the collaborative effort that has already begun to address the social-emotional learning needs of students. So I'm excited to continue that work. That's my update.
I do, actually.
Yeah, it's a big part of the work moving forward.
Cool. So for the remaining ones, Jen is not here this evening, so we can probably, and I'm not even sure if they had a meeting. They do, they have a meeting, they had one? So we'll cover next time. The West Street Building?
We've got a meeting Thursday, I believe. I haven't got the note yet, but I think it's Thursday, we're still meeting, Cheryl, do you know?
Thursday for.
Full building's still open. I have a calendar.
I don't know if I got anything.
Not this coming yet, but I know from our last agenda, we have a meeting set for Thursday.
Okay.
It's Thursday, so look for that.
Yeah, there are two different types of meetings. One is with the subcommittee and.
No, this is the full one.
Okay. Because I didn't receive anything either.
This is from July 21st agenda, because the next meeting is August 18th, so.
I haven't gotten anything.
Hopefully that's, we'll meet and hopefully they'll update us on where we're at and everything. Hopefully everything's on course, find out about the well and all that stuff. Get your September, it's almost time to dig the well.
Yeah.
Yep, it is, so.
I mean, I'm sure everybody's, you know, if they have any interest, they're following the meeting, school building committee meetings. But there was some discussion around what would be the best time to start the project because of the, some of the regulatory delays and this and that, and some of the project-related issues as to what would be the best timing to vacate, you know, one school and then move to the other school. I think we're all, yeah.
Hopefully on course to get started.
Yep, we're all set with the, exactly.
As I was going to say to somebody too.
Yep. So those were good conversations, but when I wanted to. Marie?
All right.
On the policy, subcommittee, I should just say that way so that it sounds like I'm asking building project questions.
So we went through a few different policies, and Emery, you said you were going to talk about the ones for first reading?
Yep. So we actually are in the process of reviewing Section D, which was the intent. But we realized that there were a few that we had already started talking about. If my computer starts immediately, I will actually speak to those policies that we would like to bring to the full committee for a first reading. One of them is related to the opiate. Pardon, pardon?
There are two. One is J I C E.
Yes, yep.
Which is students using tobacco, alcohol, drugs, et cetera. Plus the new opioid legislation. The second one is J L C D, which has to do with administering of medications, which includes Narcan in there, and also the option of non-medical personnel to be trained by medical personnel to administer nasal Narcan.
So we have those two.
It's a new world.
Hmm?
It's a new world.
It's a new world. And these were actually mandated, and there was a timeline, deadline around it. So all school districts had to approve these, so we are compliant with that. The other one is related to homeschooling.
Yes.
And there are some revisions, there are some proposed revisions, and we would like to submit it to the full committee for a first reading as well. It's Policy I H B G.
Do you want us to read that for the next time, or are you going to go over it now?
This is actually for a first reading, if you can read it by next time. Do we have any urgency around approval? Do we have to?
No, you can defer it for a second.
Okay, so since we're going to be approving in our next meeting, this is proposed to the full committee for a first reading. So tonight, we're basically letting you know that those are the ones we are bringing back.
You're going to have to.
Could you send us an email with which ones we need to check?
I think one policy, one of the policies is we say it once, is that, is it a policy? No?
For the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'll see them in the policy folder for today.
No, no, that's actually, that's a good point. You shouldn't have to look for it. We'll just send an email that says these are the ones that we propose for a first reading.
Um, can I go back to some old business for a moment? I just wanted to follow up on the SOFRIT, the software system, because time's ticking, and I know that the original goal was to get it up and running by the start of the new school year. Just wondering where we're at.
So I have a meeting with the town administrator tomorrow, and that is an agenda item to figure out the timeline for that. And to share this committee's desire to meet our beginning of the year request.
Yeah, and if there's anything else that we need to do. We would like to, again, a good chunk of the conversation that we're having is related to some gaps, some, you know, differences in the way we reconcile and all that.
Yeah.
And we're hoping that this software will take care of some of those issues that we have.
I, I'm just going to say for the record, if we can't get this up and running by this school year, in my opinion, we're beyond reasonable at this point. This has been going on for months now.
But the training hasn't happened yet?
If I can, just, in the policy subcommittee meeting, when it was asked, I just double-checked. We sent the school's chart of accounts June 22nd, and we haven't heard anything back from the town. So we are ready to go.
So do we need, do we, as a school committee, need to?
So, so what happened was after.
We had the meetings before, we've heard this, that this is supposed to happen, there's got to be training involved. If this doesn't happen like this, there's training involved. That hasn't been scheduled yet, how's it going to happen? How's it going to be implemented? I don't understand.
And then they sit there, they sit there in select board meetings and complain that.
But this has been three years, three years they've talked about. The money's been approved three years ago. This is ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Like I said, this is beyond unreasonable at this point.
So Cheryl, if you could, just after you have a conversation.
I would be happy to share the desire of the committee to get this following.
I have one more old business thing I'd like to bring up. Seeing as the emergency operations plan was worked on, so.
Yes.
Could we make it, if it's okay, a standing report? Like, I'd like to know that training is happening and that, because seeing as, seeing as it got worked on for an entire year and it was a lot of work, I'd like to know that it's actually happening.
Yep, it's actually an agenda item for Wednesday. It's actually 1:00 to 3:30, and that's where the police and fire are invited. What I will share is we will have safety meetings once a month that the emergency operations manual will be the focal point in implementation of fully the plan.
I would just love to be, just so that we, because I feel like we, in the last three years, we tend to forget things that are going on, and then all of a sudden, next June comes in, like, wait, did that ever happen?
It's on my follow-up list now, yeah. Thank you.
I have a to-do.
We know it's a long list.
It's a very long list, and, you know.
It's time we get some of those things off of there.
Yes, that SOFRIT keeps my nemesis.
I have one question. Were we able to register for one spot at the joint conference?
Well, to me and Jen, yes.
Okay, good.
Yep, going to be roomies.
All right, so do we have anything else that we're supposed to discuss tonight?
Not an open session.
Okay, so we have an executive session. We will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Diane, Karen, I.
Marie, McCourt, I.
Jim, Petrus, I.
Emily, I.